Councilman Dillon.
My motion, Ms. Chairman, is to deny, or dismiss with prejudice this complaint because this belongs back with the committee and in court. It should never got to the council. That's my motion.
Counsel by, or, motion by Councilman Dillon, second by Councilman Watkins. Any questions or comments? Seeing or hearing done, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Minks?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
No.
James Cross?
Uh, nope.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
No.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Yeah. Don Roy Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel that passes an eleven yes for no. Next item is the Medicine Root District. Councilman Jumping Eagle?
Thank you. Juanita was here. She left a packet with, I mean, I left a packet with Lynn back there. She's making copies. It's the, the, the resolution, the minutes from the meeting. All that good stuff. And I don't see Juanita. She must have left.
Councilman, do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
I could read it.
Okay.
Resolution of the Medicine Root District authorizing and seating the newly elected Medicine Root District Executive Board allocation and Tarot Board members for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term to conduct business on behalf of the people of Medicine Root District. Whereas the lawsuit tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December tenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC, and four seventy-six, and under article four of the Constitution, the lawsuit tribal council is a governing body of the Pioneer Indian Reservation. And whereas under article six of the lawsuit tribe's constitution, the Medicine Root District is a recognized district that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department on all matters of local interest and make recommendations thereon through the tribal council or the superintendent or commissioner of Indian affairs. And whereas the Medicine Root District may undertake and manage local enterprise in furtherance of the purpose set forth in the preamble of the lawsuit tribe's constitution. Whereas the Medicine Root District may exercise such further powers as may be delegated to communities by the tribal council. Whereas the Medicine Root District has held their election on March twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, in which Juanita Sherri Tucre was selected the president of Medicine Root District with other positions left vacant as no one ran for them. And whereas on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, selections were done off the floor by the membership of the Medicine Root District, and the following was selected. Vice President Perry Zephyr with fifteen votes, Secretary Ota Gay with twenty-six votes, Treasurer Gerald Conoyer Junior with nine votes, fifth member James Tucre with twenty-two votes, Allocation Committee Vernal White Thunder with twelve votes, Tarot Madonna War and Horse with twelve votes. And whereas the medicine, the people of Medicine Root District and newly elected board, its board members hereby respectfully request the support of the resolution so that the district may, I should say may, conduct business and to address immediate needs of the people. And be it resolved, the Medicine Root District is authorizing and seating the newly elected Medicine Root District Executive Board Allocation and Tarot Board for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term to conduct business on behalf of the people of Medicine Root District and be a further resolved that the medicine, Medicine Root District Fund shall be returned immediately to the Medicine Root District so that the district business shall begin immediately. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Watkins, and Council, do you have a question, Councilman Poyer? Yep.
So, Mr. Jumping Eagle, will these people go through a background check and all that?
See, that, that's where they were unclear. Our, our constitution, they don't have to.
But part of them, your chair went through the process.
Yeah, she did.
So, what about, I mean, so the rest should go through the process, and I think the election ordinance says that. I mean, I would think.
Well, we could get that clarified, you know, the please don't, please don't put a stop to this.
No, I'm just saying. I'm just, I'm just saying that they need to go through like everybody else did to make sure that, I mean, everybody's treated equally. We can't be jumping back and forth to, you know, whatever. That, that's what I'm asking.
Are you suggesting that we approve upon, upon completion of background and drug test?
Yeah. For those that went through the process.
Please do not add to my motion.
But I think something needs to be put in there so that they, it's clear.
Count, Councilman Jumping Eagle, can you add that, would you like to add that to your motion, or?
No, someone can make that motion after.
Okay.
Chairman?
Councilman Little Dog?
Okay, thank you. You know, on, once that process was taken out of the election committee's hands, which it has been, I think that, you know, that, that, that's no longer their, you know, the, the decision of, of the tribes, that's up to the, the districts. Um, if, if they, it's obvious nobody wanted to follow that process in that district if they only had a certain individual follow the process, but you know, once that, that process left their hands and went to the districts and they decided to fill in those blanks with, you know, with their own process, that's, that's not our staple of the tribe. You know, that's up to the districts, and I, it really upsets me when, when we try to play big brother to the districts and dictate how um, they select their individuals, you know, we're having a district election today. Um, and we do ours nominating off the floor, and there's no drug testing, no background checks, but our district's fine with that. And, and we're not going to have the tribe tell us how we run our elections. Um, I, I think that's just how it is, you know, some of these districts, you know, they do things the way they do, and I, I think it's just better that way. Every time the tribe gets involved, then we get, get all this mess going on. You know, so I, I think we should just support Medicine Root's decisions here.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The motion maker did not want to add that to his motion, but go ahead.
Well, the reason being is because they called me the other day, and they said, do these newly seated members have to do a drug test? So I said, well, how did, how was it done in the past? What does our, our constitution say? And they said that they've never did a drug test in the past. But I guess it's up to them who got elected, you know, if they want to go do a drug test, they're more than welcome to.
Okay, we still have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing or seeing done, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Um, for the record, Ryan, we need to reformat it as a tribal council resolution. Okay.
Yep.
Jim Minks? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Don Roy Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel that passes fifteen unanimous. Going into next agenda item, looks like OST Finance Committee. Set. Councilman Yellowboy?
Kind of fast, didn't know finance was on top of it. Ordinance of the Ogalsu Tribal Council of the Ogalsu Tribe declaring an end to all COVID-19-related premium pay programs of the Ogalsu Tribe. Whereas the Ogalsu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under article three of the Constitution, the Ogalsu Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogalsu Tribe. And whereas article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pioneer Indian Reservation, and to adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribe received payments from the Coronavirus State Physical Recovery Fund, FRF, which is administered by the U.S. Department of Treasury pursuant to the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, Act Public Law one-one-seven-two-dash-two, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas ARPA Act states in part that the tribal government may use FRF payments to cover costs incurred by the tribal government by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the state, territory, or tribal government that are performing such essential work, or, or by providing grants to eligible employees that have eligible workers who perform essential work. ARPA subsection six-zero-two-C-one-B. And whereas ARPA Act defines premium pay to mean an amount of up to thirteen dollars per hour that is paid to an eligible worker in addition to wages or remuneration of workers otherwise receives for all work performed by the eligible work during the COVID-19 public health emergency, and such amounts may not exceed twenty-five thousand with the respect to any single eligible worker, ARPA Act subsection six-zero-two-G-three. And whereas the U.S. Department of Treasury has issued regulations and guidance regarding the ARPA Act provisions regarding permissible FRF expenditure, cease thirty-one CFR, part thirty-five, pandemic relief programs, Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Fund Final Rule, eighty-seven Federal Reg four-three-three-eight, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, Treasury Department's Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds Frequently Asked Questions, updated April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas through various ordinances, the Ogalsu Tribe established COVID-19-related premium pay programs for eligible employees for the tribes and its employees of certain tribally-owned entities, and agencies provided such employees, such employees performed essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency, and provided further that such essential work involves regular in-person interactions with patients, the public, or coworkers, or regular physical handling of items that were handled by or are to be handled by patients or public or coworkers. And such essential work is not performed while teleworking from a residence. And whereas the tribe is currently administering a COVID-19-related premium pay programs for the following employees. Eligible employees of the Ogalsu Tribe pursuant to ordinance number twenty-one thirty-five, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, which amended the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, PPPM, ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, as amended to add section twenty-three-dash-ten, entitled COVID-19-related Premium Pay for essential tribal employees, as amended by ordinance number twenty-one-dash-eighty-seven. And eligible employees of Prairieland Casino and Hotel and Eastwood Casino pursuant to ordinance number twenty-one-dash-thirty-five, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number twenty-one-dash-eighty-seven, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and, and ordinance number twenty-one-dash-ninety-eight, December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And eligible employees of the Ogalsu Tribe Parks and Recreation Authority pursuant to ordinance number twenty-two-dash-thirty-nine, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas through other ordinances, the tribal council established COVID-19-related premium pay programs for other workers, but those programs have been terminated and are no longer being administered by the tribe. For example, through ordinance number twenty-one-dash-forty-eight, the tribal council established a COVID-19 premium pay program for eligible employees at the Oyate General Store, and that program was terminated effective December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, or, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one, pursuant to ordinance number twenty-one-dash-eighty-seven, and ordinance number twenty-one-dash-ninety-eight. And whereas the ARPA Act provides that the premium pay may be paid for eligible workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency, ARPA Act subsection six-zero-two-G-two. And the regulations provided that the COVID-19 public health emergency means the period lasting until the termination of the national emergency COVID-19 public declared pursuant to the National Emergency Act of thirty-one CFR, subsection thirty-five dot three, and whereas on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, President Joseph R. Biden signed into law House Joint Resolution seven, which became public law one-eighteen-dash-three, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and which declared that pursuant to section two oh two of the National Emergencies Act, fifty USC sixteen twenty-two, the National Emergency Declared by the finding of the President on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and proclamation ninety-nine-nine, excuse me, nine-nine-nine-four-eight-five, Federal Reg one-five-three-three-seven, is hereby terminated. Whereas on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Treasury Department issued an update FAQs in which it addresses the impact of the end of the COVID-19 public health emergency on the FRF program stating that in part that the SL-FRF statute and the final rule provided that the recipients can use the SL-FRF funds to provide premium pay to eligible workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency as defined in the final rule as a period ending when COVID-19 national emergency ends, in example, until the termination of the national emergency. According to recipients, may not use the SL-FRF funds to provide premium pay to essential workers for work conducted after the end of the national emergency, which ended on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Recipients may continue to use SL-FRF funds to provide premium pay to essential workers for work conducted before the termination of the national emergency. FAQ four dot eleven, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, emphasis added. And whereas on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council approved a motion to adopt an end to the COVID-19-related premium pay program of the Ogalsu Tribe, and providing that no person shall be eligible for premium pay for any work performed on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And the tribe shall not make any payment of premium pay to any worker for any work performed on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be ordained, tribal council hereby declares an end to all COVID-19-related premium pay programs of the Ogalsu Tribe effective April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, which is the effective date of public law one-eighteen-dash-three, which declares an end to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And be further ordained that the tribal council hereby amends section twenty-three-dash-ten of the Personnel Policies Procedures Manual, ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, as amended, and as amended to add subsection K as follows. K, no employee of the Ogalsu Tribe shall be eligible for premium pay for any work performed on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, which is the date of the COVID-19 public health emergency ended pursuant to public law one-eighteen-dash-three. Be further ordained that the tribal council hereby amends the COVID-19-related premium pay program for employees of the Prairieland Casino and Hotel and Eastwood Casino added, or, excuse me, adopted by ordinance number twenty-one-dash-thirty-five, as amended and to add subsection I as follows. I, no employee of the Prairieland Casino Hotel or Eastwood Casino shall be eligible for premium pay for any work performed on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, which is the date the COVID-19 public health emergency ended pursuant to public law one-eighteen-dash-three. Be further ordained that the tribal council hereby amends the COVID-19-related premium pay program for the Ogalsu Parks and Recreation Authority, adopted by ordinance number twenty-two-dash-thirty-nine, as amended, and to add subsection H as follows. H, no employee of the Ogalsu Parks and Recreation Authority shall be eligible for premium pay for any work performed on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, which is the date that the COVID-19 public health emergency ended pursuant to public law one-eighteen-dash-three. Be it further ordained that the tribal, excuse me, that the tribe shall not make any payment of premium pay under COVID-19-related premium pay programs of the tribe or from the tribe's payments of the Coronavirus State Physical Recovery Fund to any worker, persons, or entity for any work performed by any worker on or after April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion?
Motion by Councilman Yellowboy? Second by Councilman Watkins? Seeing or hearing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Minks?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? David Poyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Don Roy Gossberg? John Steele Senior?
Hello? Yes.
Garfield Little Dog?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Tyler, would you like to vote?
Counsel that passes thirteen yes to not voting. Councilman Yellowboy, your next item? So after conferring with the, the other co-chair of the Finance Committee, the, I was not made contact with the chair of the Finance Committee. And so she advised that the next item to be held off until we can get clarification. So I think that's it for Finance Committee.
Okay, so it might still come up later today, potentially, or next meeting?
Not today, we go back to Finance. We're going to take that back to Finance. So do I need to make a motion? Just take it off? Okay.
Okay, we're okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next committee is Health and Human Services. Chairman Jumping Eagle?
Thank you. Resolution of the Lawsuit Tribal Council, Lawsuit Tribe approving an agreement between Per Group and Native Women's Healthcare. Whereas the Lawsuit Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation, has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States Government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article six, and is a signatory of the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven-four-nine, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six-three-five, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Lawsuit Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one twenty-three, by adopting a federally-approved constitution and bylaws. And under article three of the tribal constitution, the Lawsuit Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pioneer Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Lawsuit Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribe operates a obstetric gynecological clinic in Rapid City, South Dakota, a governmental agency of the tribe pursuant to a self-determination contract entered into under public law ninety-three-six-thirty-eight to provide healthcare services to Native, Native American patients, which includes certified nurses, midwives, CN, CNM, and nurse practitioners, women's health, NPWH. And whereas the tribe desires to hire Per Group to provide healthcare business cycle support services billing to the tribe's NWHC clinic. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services Committee has not reviewed the contract, the contract was legally reviewed and went through grant committee where it was approved for HHS and OST Tribal Council action. Whereas Native Women's Healthcare experienced difficulty hiring a billing clerk, and is close to timely filling deadlines, and is, and it is imperative the Per Group contract be approved by OST Tribal Council to meet these deadlines. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lawsuit Tribal Council does hereby approve the agreement between Per Group and Native Women's Healthcare to provide healthcare business cycle support services billing. Motion?
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, question by Councilman Sears.
I'll second.
I'll second, but I have a, just a correction on that last. Whereas, Ryan? It says HHS Committee has not reviewed? So it's okay now? Okay.
So the motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Sears, any other questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Minks? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Don Roy Gossberg? John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel that passes fourteen yes to one not voting. Chairman?
Resolution of the Lawsuit Tribal Council, Lawsuit Tribe approving an agreement between Marietta Uses Knife, RN, and Native Women's Healthcare. Whereas the Lawsuit Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties of the supreme law of the land with the United States Government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article six, and is, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven-four-nine, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six-three-five, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Lawsuit Tribe organized under the section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC, subsection fifty-one twenty-three, by adopting a federally-approved constitution and bylaws. And under article three of the tribal constitution, the Lawsuit Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pioneer Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Lawsuit Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribe operates a obstetric gynecological clinic in Rapid City, South Dakota, a governmental agency of the tribe pursuant to a self-determination contract entered into under public law ninety-three-six-thirty-eight to provide healthcare services to Native American patients. Whereas a tribe desires to hire Marietta Uses Knife to provide registered nurse services to the tribe's NWHC clinic. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services Committee has not reviewed the contract, the contract was legally reviewed and went through grant committee where it was approved for HHS and OST Tribal Council action. Whereas Native Women's Healthcare experienced difficulty hiring RN due to many factors, including COVID-19 pandemic, unavailability of RNs, therefore be it resolved that the Lawsuit Tribal Council does hereby approve the agreement between Marietta Uses Knife and Native Women's Healthcare to registered nurse services. Um, before I make a motion to approve, I think just for clarification, the reason why it hasn't been reviewed- Um, before I make a motion to approve, I think just for clarification, the reason why it hasn't been reviewed at HHS. Is because we haven't been able to have a meeting. And, um, these contracts need to be, um, approved right away so they can get started providing services. So. That's why it bypassed committee, but went to, to legal to be approved and then it's here.
And it's been legal year?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's been cleared through contract, I mean grants committee too, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, Councilman Poyer?
So Ryan, in the contract. The contract reads that it started the twenty-seventh of March. So are we kind of? So the ending. Should be as of today when we approve this resolution, or we're gonna leave it the? Twenty, no, ends the twenty-seventh of March of twenty-four, beginning. March twenty-eighth of twenty-three, so should it be the April, what's today, the twenty-fifth? Should it be when we approve this resolution, or just leave it the way it was?
Yeah, just leave it the way it is.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Youngman. Seeing or hearing no other questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Meeks.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yeah.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donroy Gossberg.
Yes.
John Stale Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes fourteen yes, one not voting, Chairman?
Resolution of the Galsu Tribal Council, Galsu Tribe approving the healthcare provider and temporary replacement agreement between Native Women's Healthcare. And tribal staffing, whereas the Galsu Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land. With the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution Article six and is, is a signatory. To the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven four nine. And the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six three five. And continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Galsu Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection. Fifty-one, twenty-three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under Article three of the Tribal Constitution. The Galsu Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council. To manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe. Adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Galsu Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribe operates a obstetric gynecological clinic in Rapid City, South Dakota, a governmental agency of the tribe. Pursuant to a self-determination contract entered into under Public Law ninety-three dash six thirty-eight. To provide healthcare services to the Native American patients. Which include certified nurse, nurse, midwives, CNM, and nurse practitioner, women's health, NPWH. And whereas the tribe desires to hire tribal staffing to provide OB-GYN medical services to the eligible patients through the tribe's NWHC clinic. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services Committee has not reviewed the tribal staffing contract. The contract was legally reviewed and went through grant committee where it was denied due to lack of contract amount. Whereas tribal staffing contract was amended to include the missing justification NWHC, NWHC desire to hire. Providers immediately, whereas the contract for professional services for tribal staffing is forwarded to Tribal Council for approval. And therefore be resolved that the Galsu Tribal Council does hereby approve tribal staffing to provide emergent. To provide temporary healthcare services to NWHC. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Is that a second, Councilman Watkins? Thank you. Hearing or seeing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Meeks.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yeah.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Donroy Gossberg.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yep.
John Stale Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes fifteen unanimous.
Resolution of the Galsu Tribal Council, Galsu Tribe approving the disenrollment of Hakikta Amani Spotted Horse Steed from the Galsu Tribe membership. Whereas the Galsu Tribe OST adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth. Nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one, twenty-three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Galsu Tribal Council is the governing body of the Galsu Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the OST Constitution and bylaws of the Galsu Tribe. The Galsu Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article two of the OST Constitution authorizes the Tribal Council to adopt laws covering tribal membership. And whereas Article four, section one J of the OST Constitution empowers the Tribal Council. To enact resolutions or ordinances not inconsistent with Article two concerning tribal membership. And whereas Hakikta Amani Spotted Horse Steed requests disenrollment from the Galsu Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero three. Enrollment code Article six, section sixteen point six point one zero two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on April fourth, twenty twenty-two, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the Tribal Council approve their request for relinquishment. Of Galsu Tribe membership by disenrollment for Hakikta Amani Spotted Horse Steed. Now therefore be resolved that the Galsu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Galsu Tribe membership enrollment. And all rights as a tribal member therein for Hakikta Amani Spotted Horse Steed effective immediately. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Sears and Councilman Carlo. Seeing or hearing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Meeks.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
No.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
No.
David Poyer.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donroy Gossberg.
No.
John Stale Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog.
Not voting.
Council that's a tie, seven yes, seven no, and two not voting, oh, one not voting. Um, I will break the tie and say yes.
Resolution of the Galsu Tribal Council, Galsu Tribe approving this enrollment of. Kalaluya Amani Wee-Licking Horse from the Galsu Tribe membership. Whereas the Galsu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth. Nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection. Fifty-one, twenty-three and under Article three of the Constitution, the Galsu Tribal Council is the governing body of the Galsu Tribe. And whereas pursuant to OST Constitution and bylaws of the Galsu Tribe, the Ogallisou Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact. And promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article two of the OST Constitution authorizes the Tribal Council to adopt laws covering tribal membership. And whereas Article four, section one J of the OST Constitution empowers the Tribal Council. To enact resolutions or ordinances not inconsistent with Article two concerning tribal membership. And whereas Kalaluya Amani Wee-Licking Horse requests disenrollment from the Galsu Tribe. Membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero three, enrollment code Article six, section sixteen point six point one zero two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on, on April fourth, twenty twenty. That should say twenty twenty-three. The OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the Tribal Council approve their request for relinquishment of Galsu Tribe membership. By the disenrollment of Kalaluya Amani Wee-Licking Horse. Now therefore be resolved that the Galsu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request. For relinquishment of Galsu Tribe membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Kalaluya Amani Wee-Licking Horse effective immediately. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Carlo. Seeing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please? I'm sorry.
Jim Meeks.
Yep.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
No.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
No.
David Poyer.
Yeah.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donroy Gossberg.
Yes.
John Stale Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes eleven yes, four no.
Resolution of the Galsu Tribal Council approving Doug O'Brien Contractings Contract Change Order Number Two to add work for the construction of the Pine Ridge. Lagoon Bypass Piping Contract, PR twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one. Whereas the Galsu Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth. Nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC. Fifty-one point two three and under Article three of the Constitution, the Tribal Council is the governing body of the Galsu Tribe. And whereas the Tribal Constitution authorizes the Tribal Council in Article four, section one A to negotiate with the federal government on behalf. Of the tribe in section one F to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. In section one G to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe, any available tribal council funds and in section one W. To protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Galsu Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Galsu Tribal Council has the authority to approve contracts and change orders. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee is a standing committee of the Tribal Council. That oversees the Indian House Service Martin Sanitation Facilities Construction Contracts. And whereas the Galsu Tribe's Water and Sewer Company requires the approval of a change order. And contract modification to add additional work to contract PR twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one. Between the Galsu Tribe and Doug O'Brien Contracting. And whereas on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Galsu Tribe House and Human Services Committee met during. Regular session and approved the change order to add work to the contract. Change order number two will increase contract PR twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one by a total of five. Five hundred and fifty dollars from. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents to two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents. Additional work includes additional parts and labor for sealing. The level control structure, additional piping and fencing and the removal of a valve that was not needed. Now therefore be it resolved that. The Tribal Council of the Galsu Tribe has voted to approve the contract change order. For Doug O'Brien Contracting to add work to the Pine Ridge Lagoon Bypass Piping Contract. PR twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one and increase the contract total by five hundred and fifty dollars from. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. To two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents. And be it. Further resolved, the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign. Any documents necessary to execute contract change order number two, motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Carlo. Seeing or hearing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Meeks. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donroy Gossberg.
Yes.
John Stale Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Thanks for remembering this.
Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes fourteen yes and one not voting, and just for the record, Councilman Poyer, we would never forget you. Your last item, Chair?
Resolution of the Galsu Tribal Council, Galsu Tribe approving the MOA between. Between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project. GP dash twenty-three dash D nine eight and the Galsu Tribe in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Dollars to repair deficiencies related to the Kyle Sewage Lift Station. For one hundred eighty-six homes in the Kyle Community of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Galsu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December tenth, nineteen fifty-three. Nineteen thirty-five, right? In accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC course seventy-three and amendments. And whereas under Article three of the Galsu Tribe's Constitution, the Galsu Tribe is the governing body of the Galsu Tribe and whereas Article. Four, section one T of the Galsu Constitution authorizes the Galsu Tribal Council to delegate this. To subordinate boards or officers, any of the enumerated powers in Article four, section one. Reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee is a standing committee of the Galsu Tribe. And has been delegated the power to oversee Health and Human Services Programs. On behalf of the Galsu Tribal Council and Ogallala Oyate. And whereas the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project GP. Dash twenty-three dash D nine eight in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is scheduled to replace two submer- submersible pumps. And one some pump as they are inoperable at this time. And install cellular station monitoring for greater control of the Kyle Sewage Lift Station. In the Kyle Community. And whereas this project will impact one hundred and eighty-six homes in the Kyle Community that has been. Provided water and solid waste disposal facilities. And whereas it is in the best interest of the Galsu Tribe and the Oyate that this project be approved by the Tribal Council. Now therefore be resolved that the Galsu Tribal Council recommends approval of the MOA. Between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project. GP dash two-three dash D nine eight and the Galsu Tribe in the amount of. One hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to repair deficiencies related to the Kyle Sewage Lift Station. For one hundred eighty-six homes in the Kyle Community of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Galsu Tribal Council for final approval. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Watkins. Seeing or hearing no questions or concerns, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Meeks.
Yep.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
For the people of Kyle, yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross. Ella Giancarlo. Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donroy Gossberg.
Yes.
John Stale Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Yes.
Council that passes fourteen yes, one not voting for the people of Kyle, yes, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cross.
Uh, good morning, um, since I H S is here, I got a. Question on the. On the lagoons and I don't know, I'm talking for past few but. I that. I was wondering if you can put some kind of a solution in the lagoons because of the smell, you know, maybe put some Clorox or. Pints all in there or something, but that that strong is really, that smell is really strong. I don't know if other districts are doing, having that issue too.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good morning, Council.
Could you state your name for the record?
James Ainsley with the Indian Health Service.
Thank you, James.
Uh, in regards to your question, the uh, there's a seasonal turnover for all the. Every lake, every lagoon, natural body of water. And that's the the smell that you're going to be experiencing. It should pass with time. As far as adding anything into it, it would preclude treatment that that the lagoon is there to provide. We did install the aeration unit in the Allen Lagoon, which should significantly help. But that's going to be a problem that every lagoon is going to have at least twice a year, uh, irregardless of the location.
Thank you, James, appreciate it. Our last regular. Committee that has items is Law and Order Committee, Chairman Watkins.
Well, thank you, Chair. Secretary. Could you read it for me?
Resolution of the Ogala City Tribal Council of the Ogala City Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogala City Tribal Council of the Ogala City Tribe rescinding Resolution number twenty-three fifty-four. That approved the memorandum of understanding between the Ogala City Tribe and Ogulutetcha. Whereas the Ogala City Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation. That has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land. With the United States government pursuant to the Uni- U S Constitution, Article four. And a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one. One statute seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one. And the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen sat six three five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight. And continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogala City Tribe organized under section sixteen. Of the Reorganization Act.
Whereas the Ogala City Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act in nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U S C subsection fifty-one twenty-three. By adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Ogala City Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing, governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogala City Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribal council passed Resolution number twenty-three dash fifty-four approving a memorandum of understanding between the tribe and Ogulutetcha. To provide a shelter for the homeless and allowing. The use of Billy Mills Hall located in Pine Ridge Village until June first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas there have been numerous complaints and safety issues regarding the use of Billy Mills Hall as a homeless shelter due to the incidents of violence and alcohol and substance use. Including a knife assault on an individual. And whereas there is a unacceptable increase in loitering, alcohol and drug use. Near homes and businesses and due to the immediate safety concerns for the safety, not only for individuals in the shelter, but also for the community as a whole. The O S T Law and Order Committee has reviewed the issues and recommends that the tribal council rescind the approval of the M O U immediately. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogala City Tribal Council does hereby rescind. Resolution number twenty-three dash fifty-four. That approved the memorandum of understanding between Ogulutetcha and the Ogala City Tribe effective immediately certification.
Before I um. Make the motion agree, could you read that over? I didn't catch everything you're saying. I have a motion.
Motion by Councilman Watkins, second by Councilwoman Carlo. Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um. I just feel like I have to say something about this. Because we don't have, um. Shelter for our people when they're, when they're going to leave that building. And I think, you know, I did get a message from Abram. Newman. And he wanted to know if we can. Address this because he was on his way back from a family. I think he had a family emergency that he had to leave, leave the state. Out of country too rather than that, but, um. He did ask if we can wait. To the end of the agenda, but I don't know where he's coming in from. But um, he, he is on his way. But um, that's a concern I have because we, it's, it's still cold outside. You know, you wake up and there's frost out there and I don't know. If um, you know, what we're going to do with the homeless. If we do take this action, I, I believe that we should. At least leave it until the end of May. Uh, because they were supposed to be out there in Ju- out of there in June. And I did have a conversation with um, one of the ladies that runs the homeless shelter that's kind of helping. And her name is Michelle Little. And I did ask her what's going on there because I, I haven't gone there myself. And she said that everything's going good, but it was a person that wasn't supposed to be a part of that. Um, homeless shelter showed up outside. And the, the security went out there to. See what was going on and try to make him this person leave. And he ended up getting stabbed in that incident before the cops could get there. So it wasn't. Happening within the facility. Because um. Uh, they were pretty much get, you know, going in for the night. So, you know, I just wanted to bring that out because I know that they want it to be here and I don't know if they had a. You know, transportation problems or not, but I just have that concern of where they're going to go, so. You know, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
You know, just to add to that, me and Mend- me and Wendell yesterday met with um. Pastor. Pastor Dan. And he also wanted to, he gave us some information. Well, he also wanted to address. The council to our committee, wherever it was at. But uh, his, his wife was. Going through some medical emergencies, so he couldn't be here, but. You know, he also stated the same thing that um. You know, that knife attack that happened there, it was some guy who just come over. That didn't stay there and so uh, we brought up, you know. The issues that we heard as far as the alcohol. The drugs, the drug um, stuff and. And what he told us, right, Wendell, is that none of that's going on. But you know, we all. We all know, we all got the same report of everything that goes on over there. Um. But he, he also wanted to address the council, but he couldn't come today because of sickness in his wife, so.
Councilwoman Carlo and then Councilman Little Dog.
You know, um, I guess it just depends on who you, who you speak to in regards to that um, shelter. Um. Pine Ridge, Pine Ridge Village does. Have a resolution. Um, I didn't get it from our district chair, but they are in support of that bill, the hall being closed. You know, all summer, all winter long. That hall is used. For homelessness. That deprives our kids from um, using that hall for. Pee-wee, basketball, et cetera. Everybody thinks because we're in Pine Ridge, we have all these buildings. That um, our youth can occupy. When that isn't true, that hall is used. For our youth. And adults in the evening. Now my understanding, I'm not going to go into specific detail. Um, in regards to that situation. But um. Ryan mentioned shortly that. Um, you know, the, the drug use and the alcohol. Cops are there every night. Um. Ambulances are there. I know I drive by and I see it too. And um. You know, what was said to me is. If the council is so concerned. Then how come they're not moving? Individuals from district to district. Wakpamani is down the road, how come they don't take them to Wakpamani? How come Ogala don't keep them? You know, it goes on and on and on, and these are just the things that are being said to me. You know, people are tired of the tacky bathrooms sitting on the. On the uh, main street, people drive through, have to see that. You know, that hall isn't. Even equipped for people to bathe. To wash. You know, on and on and on. And um, I support this closure. I believe if you talk to the. Community in Pine Ridge. There are more people that are in support of this closure than there are those that support it. So I would um. I'd appreciate if you go ahead and run the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Little Dog.
Thank you, Chair, um. You know, we, we had these concerns for our relatives for uh. For quite some time because of the issues surrounding the homeless stuff. But it's to a point now where. There's. Individuals that are, are. That are not homeless. They're not homeless, they just choose not to go home because they're using alcohol and drugs. And. These types of people are, are not just showing up at that door for no reason. They're showing up there because it's happening there. And it's law enforcement. Officers themselves that are telling us. About all the activity going on there. The, the drunks and the drug use and whatnot, finding gum, needles and stuff. No, this is happening there. It's unfortunate that. A great um, number of individuals are ruining it for a smaller amount of people. But. There are some people who really need um, shelter. That, that we need to, to, to figure out, you know, to help those relatives. But, you know, it's sad that those ones that are ruining it for these other ones, they, they have places to go. They just choose not to. Um, and, and Alajon is right. You know, a lot of our districts, those are our people that are just hanging out there. I see some of our people from Anderson over there. And one did me. But they just choose not to go home because of their. Their addiction. And that shouldn't all weigh on Pine Ridge Village's shoulders. All our problems too. So, you know, those are the districts that are concerned, take your tent. Every district got a tent. To, to occupy these um. Utilize for these um. Our people that need the shelter, we're putting ours up in our district this week. And hopefully we could get our relatives back from Pine Ridge. And they'll be more safe back in our own district. So I, I just wanted to say that much, I support Pine Ridge Village's uh, resolution and. Maybe we can all put up our tents in our districts and take care of our own people. And that'll be a lot easier for Pine Ridge Village for. The, to, to find shelter for theirs, because they have a tent too. It, it's not too cold where those tents won't be. You know, harmful to them, you know, they'll be able to. Because those tents are state-of-the-art, they're two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, they can. You can house them through, through cold and whatnot. So. I, I think um, to assist Pine Ridge Village, we should all put our tents up. And take our relatives back and take care of them ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, final comment with Councilman Cross.
Okay, thank you, um. My, my concern is, is the um. The mothers and their babies. You know, I, I think we should really look at what can we do for them? I mean, I know it's the. It's the bad apples that are making a bad for those uh. For the rest of the, the ones that are, that really, really need a place, but. One of the, one of my concerns is, is, you know, um. Is the evictions that are happening with, with, with the housing authority. And I, we tried to address this issue, you know, um, last administration tried to remove just the. The one that was doing the meth in those homes and then leave the mother and children alone, but. But we, 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 we eventually moved everybody up. Grandma, grandpa, tacos, we kicked them all out because of one or two individuals that were doing that, that, that drug in it. And so, so uh, there may be increase that we're going to be dealing with in homeless population on a reservation. And so I think we really should um, uh, take a look at that again and revisit that, so that's my comment, thank you.
Councilman Cross or any council members, do we know if there's still the homeless task force? There still is, okay. Okay, maybe they can step in and. Um. Help find some solutions too. Councilman Ghost Bear, did you have the final comment? Okay.
Yes, I don't have a comment, but I had someone I wanted to give the floor to for a few minutes, you had a comment?
Councilman Watkins?
Uh, Welpeela. Councilman. Ghost Bear. Wakpamani District. At Hokahea, tuwa tiata na kabna ijsia. Omenichekele nahumpi hetchi. Ho ijsia lena lakota oyateki tiwahe when you habshni. Na ijsia lena ma skaa ota ijob. Na ijsia tuwa tiwaheki ijsia. Unshi kabla na ijsia ugnas na. Tuktektel ihuni. Na lechalash. Wi chashawa ijsia kteb. Mark Whitehawk et job. Na ijsia he tiwahe yuhashni, hechel un. Na ijsia lenat chazeki. Itchachan kilena yakub. Na takuun oyate tchan ta maunshila. Maunhab. Na takomni heno oyate unkithab. Na ijsia tagni yutabsni. Na tiwahe yuhabsni. Na tuktektel yoaktahe. Na ijsia housing Ogala Lakota Housing Authority gehe ijsia lena itacham. Just want to switch to English from the beautiful Lakota language. No matter what. Those Lakota people are our people. Whether they're drunk. Whether they're on meth. Whether they're pitiful, whether they don't have a home, they're still our people. All of our families have one of those in our family, I have one. And you know what? I worry about him and I pray for him every day. And what I said in the Lakota language is, we had the housing authority monies. And eleven million had to get sent back. Eleven million could have built a shelter. There's a lot of things eleven million could have did. And you sit here and you want to run our relatives out of Pine Ridge. Takomni, this is the Pine Ridge Reservation, lena unkithab. It's not district by district, Pine Ridge belongs to everybody, it's the agency. And it saddens me to sit here and listen to you say, take your people back to your districts. Wa eh. They're humans. We need to come to a better solution here. If you get evicted into the state. You get thirty days. To transition. And it's still cold, it was thirty-two degrees the other night. And what I said was, we had a death in Manderson of homeless people. Homeless all his life. Now we need to work together, I see you guys doing good things. Don't do that to human life. Wa eh, takomni, there's a chanupa that, that sits in the middle of this circle. And some of you know what that chanupa is. Do it, make some good decisions for our people that are indigent. They can't make decisions for themselves. It's a sickness. They're sick. Makes me sad when you talk like that about our people, at least. Have some compassion. Mitakue oyasi.
Councilman Little Dog.
You know. When, when some of us speak. It makes, you know, it's easy. it makes, you know, it's easy for someone to get up, make it sound like we don't care about our people. Wa Ea. You know, these are decisions that we have to make and it's hard. And the reason why I said we should take care of our own in our districts is because they have families in their districts. That's why I stated that. It's not to chase anyone out of Pine Ridge because some of these people don't know anybody in Pine Ridge, but that's where they're at. And, and what's told to us is a lot of these individuals, they get, they walk to Rushville or they get to Rushville and then that's where they're at, is at this homeless shelter. And you could sit here and say we threw a bunch of money back to the feds and didn't use it and, and didn't build buildings. There's certain requirements we had to use those monies for. If it was eligible to build buildings, believe me, we would have built them. We would have had shelters built. So you got to know what you're talking about before you put this news out or you're going to make it sound like we didn't know what we were doing. There's guidelines that came, that come with these dollars. And we can only use them for certain things or else the tribe will be having to pay that back with our general fund monies. So if we don't follow these guidelines, then we'd be in trouble. So we didn't just throw back nine, eleven million dollars or whatever for no reason at all. We spent what we could on, on what the guidelines allowed us to. So before anybody outside of this circle speaks about it to our people, they should know what they're saying. Because those of us sitting in the circle, we know, we know what we're talking about. Because we have to deal with it every day. Cola over here, James, what he brought up, this housing issue. It feels like my district's under attack because our district, we're getting houses boarded up by the day and it's crazy. But some of our tenants, they have to understand, you know, that they, they have to monitor who's in their homes. Because when they built, they board these homes up because of the meth use, it, it affects these young kids. These young kids come back from school and their houses is boarded up. I try to bring it up, but it's a policy. It's a policy. Oh, you can't do nothing about it. It's a policy. It makes it seem like we're heartless when we're really trying to, to, to address the issue. This homeless issue is, it's a huge problem on the Pine Ridge Reservation. We have to look at, at, at addressing that policy that we have at housing. So it does keep these children in these homes. Because I'm, I'll, I'll show you my texts that I'm getting every day from our people when they board up these homes. And it's out of their hands because it's people that are on addictions that are coming and ruining it for the moms and the grandmas. But James is right. I thought we had that policy in place where we weren't going to remove those people, the grandmas and the kids, but it's happening. Houses are getting boarded up and I'm getting, I'm getting, every day I'm getting these calls. So in HHS Committee, we need to re-adjust that because man, it's sad to see kids come home from school and their house boarded up. It's just causing more, more, you know, some of these kids are talking about suicide now. And that's not where we want it to go. But these young adults that are using, abusing this meth, they have to understand that they're, they're doing that to their, their own family members. You know, that's not our responsibility. Everyone always puts it on the tribal council, but you know, the social issues, they start in the family. You got to address your own children and grandchildren. You know, teach them right from wrong. I got five sons. I got five sons. And not any of my sons are out fighting, causing chaos in the community. My oldest sons don't even drink. One's twenty-one and one's twenty. They don't drink. Because I, I discipline them. They were brought up good. So I'm just saying it that much is that, you know, we have to start addressing our own out there and not put all these problems on us, like we're the ones causing this. It, it just upsets me when people stand up and talk and, and, and make it sound like we're heartless. These are hard decisions we have to make every single day. But we do it with the people in mind. So thank you, Madam Vice.
Please round the vote. Thank you for clarifying. Councilman Watkins, did you have the final, final, final comment?
You bet. You know, it was brought forth, Jackie, during our meeting. Out of respect, I let you bring the homeless in there. We, we talked to them. We respected them. We even, Wendell even asked about their laws, if they're doing their policies. To that point, I think Wendell, he said they didn't, but they'll start enforcing it. Well, that wasn't the point. We let them talk. They also told us that, give them time that they'll find places. Think they were supposed to get with that father, Dan or where. But, you know, the Pine Ridge District and I had a councilman get hold of them. He was there when I did that. So, you know, everything went, you know, and like Garfield said, I don't, I don't agree with Garfield a lot of time, but he really spoke good this time, you know, washed up. But it is, you know, we have people get up here, they put us down. We do a lot of things that they say that we didn't listen to people, but we do. And we also listen to the districts. You know, and yeah, it might be thirty-two degrees, but it ain't freezing anymore. And you know what really got me was a couple of council people told me that soon as we made that decision, they thought they was getting kicked out. They went back to their homes. You know, so Garfield's right. They, they do have homes, but because they could get free chow and lay around and drink their booze and all that. You know, it ain't, we ain't the ones that forced the people to be that way. You know, even these ones without jobs, there's jobs out there, but they don't want them anymore. We spoiled our people by giving them money all the time. Giving them things. You know, it's time they stood up and start doing things. But, you know, Madam Chair, run the vote. Yes or no? Let's get it out there.
Sounds good. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please? We have a second, Councilwoman Carlo. Councilwoman Carlo, you're the second, correct? Motion to approve? To approve, yep.
Jim Ains. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. He, uh. Donra Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior.
No.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel that passes twelve yes, three no. With that, I do believe lunch is here. So if you guys would like to take a thirty-minute break for lunch, Councilman Cross, can you give us a lunch prayer, please? M' dakyo yasay. Thank you. And we'll be, take thirty minutes for lunch. So we'll come back at about one ten, one fifteen. Oh, one. Thank you.